We'll now be starting our next session on housing. So we'll have a panel consisting of HCD, Live Baltimore, and Department of Planning. And we've been joined by Councilman Zeke Cohen, Councilman Robert Stokes, Councilwoman Sharon Middleton, Councilman John Bullock, Councilman Henry, and Councilwoman Burnett, and Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. I'm going to ask each of the presenters to introduce their teams as they come up and ask that you hold your presentations to about 10 minutes each. So, Mr. Braverman, if you could introduce your team as you come up and then give us a presentation on HCD. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon.
I'm sorry, my part. And then we'll refrain, we'll hold questions until all three presentations.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Pleasure to be here. Let me introduce my team that's here today from Baltimore Housing. On my right is Julie Day, who's our Acting Chief of Staff right now, and Nadia Morgan, who is currently the Chief Administrative Officer in the Department's Code Enforcement Division. Peter Engel, who you can say hi and goodbye to, is currently running our Project Finance and Development operations. Bill Colbert, I'm going to linger over that for a second. This is Bill's last day in city government. It's it, today. So he's after 42 years of incredible service. Yes, and we want to thank you for your citation, for Bill, but I also have to say, I try not to take it personally because here I am in this acting role. I could use my flank covered, and he submits his resignation, but I think it's well deserved.
He stayed for budget hearings.
Yes, he's here today on his last day. So, thank you. And Siglindy Chablus, who is our CFO for Baltimore Housing. Thank you, Siglindy. Jeff Martin, who's got big shoes to fill over in the Budgets Office for DHCD, who runs our operating budget and was going to be running everything in the interim. And then Alice Kennedy runs our Division of Green Healthy and Sustainable Homes, AKA Dog Ash. So Alice is on the street with a lot of homeowners and residents with needs on a regular basis. And then for the Live, Steve will present independently for Live Baltimore? Okay, so I'll stop there. I don't see anyone else from my team here. With that said, I'm going to feel a little foolish kind of reading this thing to you. I know you all want to get to the questions, but let me just go quickly through the services without reading every piece of it here. Weatherization is an important part of the services that the Division of Green Healthy and Sustainable Homes executes. So if you look at the number of homes weatherized in Baltimore City, this is money that's coming from the state that's being spent in Baltimore City. It's a big number that's going right into the homes of our residents through the great work of Alice and her staff. And Alice, I won't be offended if I miss anything or something you need to add. Please do, because I'm sure the council wants to hear as much as possible. Then another function is the work that we do to ensure homeownership outcomes from all of the real property activity that occurs in Baltimore City. How do we incentivize a homeownership outcome? And we do that through providing homeownership incentives. And so another large part of what Alice's staff is doing is getting those homeownership incentives out the door. And if you take a look at the numbers, they're pretty extraordinary on an annual basis. So Housing Development, Finance, and Project Management, that's the most sort of, the thing that you might recognize most about this is our home program. So home is one of the sources of federal money that we get to leverage affordable housing in Baltimore City. That work is done by Peter Engel and his shop. So we get probably about $3 million a year now in home money. It's always leveraged with other money from the state and light tech deals, et cetera. But if you look at the numbers, the past four years alone are about 1,200 units of new affordable housing in Baltimore City. So this is a major source of affordable housing going forward, the creation of new affordable housing. So Housing Rehab Loans, this is another program run from Alice's shop, the Division of Green Healthy and Sustainable Homes. This is a way to provide, it's kind of a blight prevention service, a way of getting money directly into the homes of homeowners in Baltimore City to do deferred, long deferred maintenance with a deferred loan program. It's state money. It's almost $4 million, again, going into the homes of Baltimore City residents. This last one, I'm sure you're all familiar with, Building, Zoning, Inspections, and Permit Issuance. This is the teams that issue the permits every year. In fiscal '16, we hit a record number. We are back up from where we were before the crash. We did 34,000 permits at close to $2 billion worth of estimated cost of work. And we moved the permitting functions. You can do 100% of the functions online now. That's a huge step forward. And Nadia Morgan is here from, as Chief Administrative Officer, most, all of those details run through her head. So with that said, I didn't want to spend a lot of time on that because I know you have questions and you want to get to them. So those are the services. That's what we do and why we do it. And with that, we can open it up to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Braverman. We've also been joined by Councilman Ryan Dorsey. And so we'll have the next presentation from, who's the next, Steve Gondal of Live Baltimore.
All right. Good afternoon, members of council. So Live Baltimore, I'm joined today by our Director of Operations, Julie French. Julie and I have participated in this process for the past five years. And although I'm not retiring today, this is my last one before I step down June 15th to relocate to Ohio. So this is an honor and kind of a fun way to go out, you know. So Live Baltimore has fallen under Housing for the past several years. And, you know, the biggest thing about our service is that we are the face of, you know, living here in Baltimore City to prospective and current residents looking to either rent or buy, as well as engaging existing residents to be an active voice in the marketing of their neighborhood. And we firmly believe in all 278 city neighborhoods from Howard Park to Highland Town and Hamilton to Hunting Ridge. Key things about our service is the website, which is our portal to attracting and engaging an audience. We do about 18,000 unique visitors a month. And we directly engage with about 6,500 prospective residents, typically home buyers and also renters. Things to point out with our service, for FY '16, for every dollar of funding we received, we generated $10 in real estate taxes back to the city. That was $9.3 million alone last year, and that is through property, recordation, and transfer taxes. The core of this work is to support Housing's Office of Home Ownership, Alice Kennedy, with the BHIP program specifically around six home buying events, two major ones at Poly High School, four smaller neighborhood ones spread throughout the city. Our most recent one in March was in the Walterson neighborhood, but we have hosted these all over Baltimore the past several years. Other key things are the Live Near Work program. Our staff person is directly responsible for engaging current and prospective businesses here in Baltimore or nearby Baltimore that want to offer the Live Near Work incentive. And so we have a great relationship with Housing and D. Beth Saunders for not only getting companies to enroll, but keeping them engaged with the program. And we produce a number of marketing materials to help them promote it within the company. So having a company sign up four years ago doesn't do anything if they're not actively promoting it as a benefit. So we go in and talk to employees and the employers, especially the HR divisions, about what a value and a benefit this is to their employees, as well as the city employees. We go almost every month to the new employee orientation and talk about the city employee incentive and the value that has as a city employee. And then lastly, this service also entails the Resident Retention Work Way to Stay, which is based around the three principles of school, space, and support. Talking to current families here in Baltimore about a way to stay, whether they need a larger home or if they are looking around schools or identifying and connecting with other parents in their current neighborhood or future neighborhood. And a provision of that is the Resident Retention Tax Credit, which is actually through Finance Department, that many of you worked on with our state leaders to, whether it was the Portable Homestead or the Second Time Home Buying Credit. But we're trying to really get more people aware of the value of that credit if they're looking to move up in Baltimore City versus move out. So those are the key areas that Live Baltimore provides through this service. And I'll gladly take questions after we're done. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And so who's representing the planning department, sir? And we've also been joined by Councilwoman Shannon Snead.
Good afternoon. The Planning Department will be presenting our entire agency later this evening, but the comprehensive planning section in particular works very closely with Housing. And so I think that's why we were asked to join you this afternoon. The service includes neighborhood planning. We have planners that are assigned to different areas throughout the city and work very closely with neighborhoods on neighborhood plans, really a wide variety of different types of neighborhood plans, including the Inspire Plans around the 21st Century Schools and the Links Plans for some of the neighborhood commercial corridors. We also work on development review, coordinating community input on development review. We work on the Pimlico Local Impact Aid. We also, within this service, do mapping and research for the Planning Department and for other city agencies and work very closely with other city agencies on different policies and initiatives that they're working on, including working very closely with Housing on demolition priorities and the Green Network Plan and lots of other initiatives.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and start with questions. The first question I wanted to ask is related to Service 738, weatherization. And one of the performance measures, it says number of homes weatherized that also received other division services. For FY '16, the target was 45, but the actual was six. Can you talk a little bit about what we're doing to make certain? And I see that the targets have been reduced significantly. But can you talk a little bit about what we're doing to make certain that other services are being made available when we engage with?
I'm going to ask Alice to come up and, and Alice is an expert on that topic, so I think you can get your best information.
Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. To answer your question, Sherman, the targets were actually reduced looking forward, once I was able to see that there were some reporting, I don't want to say issues, but the way that we were looking at as a division for reporting on the services that you receive, weatherization service as well as lead hazard reduction and the Office of Rehabilitation. This number most likely will be adjusted and is actually greater than what is reported there. The large target of 45 and then going down to the number of six, that happened at my transition time last year in terms of reporting. And I've been, over the last year, kind of reevaluating and reassessing with the division chiefs how we report on that. The number will be much higher, and we're actually in the process, in the next 30 days, of reviewing what I call our central coordinating of case coordination, active case coordination with the division chiefs for houses that receive lead hazard abatement, weatherization, and Office of Rehab services. Another drop in that is that the dollar figure from, that allowed for the number to be higher at the 45 mark was also due to the Customer Investment Funds, which was flexible funding that would allow for additional rehab to take place, as well as lead hazard work on top of weatherization services. And so with that dropping off, we've also had to look at what's available for funding sources through CDBG as well as state funds.
And so we're getting some of those funds back. Did it say 2.6, potentially 2.6 million?
Correct. So we're not getting any funds back. What happened was is that the Public Service Commission announced that they had additional funds available, and we submitted on behalf of the city a application to receive those funds. And the good news is, is that the City of Baltimore is the only entity or jurisdiction awarded any additional funds from the Customer Investment Fund from the Public Service Commission.
So do you think as a result of us getting that 2.6 million that our target for the number of homes weatherized will go up? Or do you still see 600 as being?
So the target for the number of homes going up, that's still going to stay at 600 due to the fact that currently, as of June 30th, our federal DOE grant ends. And we have not yet received information from the federal government as to what the new grant amount will be for the next fiscal year. And then the state empower program ends at the end of October of 2017. And that is going into the next three-year cycle. So we're in an empower planning cycle right now. And so all of the state empower money is also up in the air in terms of how much the state will get, which then will pass down to us as a local LWA.
And my last question, in reference to this work and these resources, are there any MBE, WBE goals related to?
There are. So each, under lead hazard reduction as well as weatherization, which was specific to this service, our contractors have to meet MBE, WBE requirements as part of the approved bid process. So that contractual agreement, I think we're in the first year of one for four of our contractors. Another one will end up going into a one-year option, and they all had specific MBE, WBE goals to meet under those requirements.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Henry?
Okay, so actually, you asked my weatherization question. No, no, good. And I had a question for planning, which was about, I'm sorry, the number of external stakeholders engaged. And I was just curious as to why the targets for both last year and this year substantially lower than the actuals for FY '16? Like, why are we purposely shooting to engage fewer people than we already managed to engage the first time we counted?
Right. So it was a new measure. And so we didn't have the actuals for FY '16 when we set the target for FY '17. So that's why that one is lower. And then we don't know whether, because we had so many special initiatives going on in FY '16, whether we would have quite as many people engaged in FY '18.
Like, I was wondering whether or not this was consciously a, an expectation of, well, no, just like, we went through a lot with Transform. Hopefully, it's done.
This isn't actually even counting Transform, because that was largely done, and it may be a little bit, but that was largely done through land use. And this is just within the comprehensive planning section. So the Planning Department as a whole would have engaged more stakeholders even than this number.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then the third one, and Julie and I talked about this a little bit ahead of time. I think I'm going to hold that question until the 3 o'clock session. Will Mr. Hessler and Mr. Booker be here for the 3 o'clock either? Okay, all right. Great. Thank you.
We've been joined by Council President Young, Chairman Costello, and Karan Banks from the mayor's office. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. I kind of put my name in expecting to have some questions, and I'm having, I'm going to pass to somebody else right now.
Sounds good. Councilman Burnett?
I like Housing a lot. They do a great job. That's why it's hard for me to think of ways of razzing.
Still question us. We enjoy that, too.
Sorry, I was thrown off. Yeah, so I had a question about, so I had some of my stuff. As I'm looking through the rest of the day, I think I'm going to hold off on a couple of my questions around code enforcement and blight. But I did have a question around homeownership promotion. I wasn't aware that the organization did that. Can you talk a little bit about what's being done within that budget item? I guess it's Service 742. And the other piece, hold on, I'm a homeowner. You know, efforts to kind of, as we try and grow the city and attract people to the city, it looks like the outputs are a little bit low and targets are low as far as new homeowners coming into the program. But I also didn't know that that was something that was done.
Well, we partnered with Live Baltimore on that active attraction piece. But as far as the homeownership incentives in particular, I can ask Alice to expound a little bit on the program.
So this is another one where the targets will be greatly adjusted. In part, last fiscal year, well, actually, this fiscal year, but it happened last summer, we actually went through and realized that the budget amount for promoting homeownership was at a minimum and was going to greatly affect the number of incentives that we could provide. And at the time, the previous administration actually was able to find additional funding to put into this service. So these numbers will increase. I think one of the key things here is that we have one month left in this current fiscal year. And our budget, including the CDBG program, which is under this service, which provides $5,000 incentive to lower income homeowners that qualify with income limits, we will have greatly exceeded the target of homeowners assisted in the city in terms of the 775 number. That program alone, in terms of CDBG, assists close to three, will have assisted close to 300 homeowners for this fiscal year. Live Near Your Work is our other program. We will be almost hitting the 300 mark for that program. Our Vacants to Value Booster as well will have gone over 100 for those. So we should fall in the 800 to 900 range in terms of number of people assisted. And that includes the incentives. We put aside 100 $5,000 incentives that Live Baltimore is able to market. And then we do all of the processing in terms of underwriting and processing and final approval.
And is that, it's been a couple of years. I actually received one of those a few years ago, so I'm thankful. So I bought my house. When I was doing it, though, I think it was kind of first come, first served, and then it was a lottery. Is it still a lottery system?
It is still a lottery system, which I think has changed. It used to be years ago that you'd have to kind of come down and stand outside of 417 Benton Building. At one point in time, I know that there were people that would come out and start waiting in line at 4 o'clock in the morning to be kind of first in line. But we've changed that to a lottery system. There's one thing to be said, which is that the program is highly successful in terms of when you look at the Baltimore homeownership program in general. And we are assisting people in terms of looking at where they need to purchase. And when you have a $5,000 forgivable, five-year forgivable loan that can go, it goes a long way when you're a first-time home buyer trying to make things look. We are looking at changing some of the incentive programs for this next fiscal year to make the funding last longer and to potentially be able to provide a larger number of incentives in changing from $5,000 for several of the programs, $10,000 for the Vacants to Value Booster. And the Live Near Work, we average out about $2,500 for that incentive.
Yeah, no, it's a great program, especially when we talk about neighborhood marketing and stabilization. I was one of those folks that went into it knowing exactly where I wanted to buy, but it was also kind of cool to check out some of the houses on the tour and opening up to some other neighborhoods that maybe in the future, check out. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilwoman Clark, I'm sorry, Council President, excuse me.
Thank you, because I have to leave in a few minutes, but I'll try to get back. In Volume One, on page 259, this is for Housing Community Development, the performance measures chart on page 269 includes a footnote that says, "Before and After Care Will Be Paid For By the Youth Fund," which is certainly news to me. But the major budget item table says that DHCD will explore alternative funding source. Who can tell me where the funding for before and after care is coming from? Somebody.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon, Council President. Right now, it's coming from, is it called Transfer of Appropriation, Budget Director?
For fiscal '18, it's, the general fund is supporting before and after care.
Okay, so it's not coming out of the Children and Youth Fund?
No.
No, that's.
That's good news. Okay. With the homeownership grants to help with the closing costs of down payment, can you provide a breakdown of how many people apply for each grant that was offered? And how many people received those grants? And can you revise statistics on how many people applied to acquire a vacant house and vacant lot through the Vacants to Value Program for the past few years?
We can definitely get back to you on that. I wouldn't have that with me. But we have that data, right? How many people applied to buy our inventory over the past several years? And how many people applied for incentives over the past several years? Be happy to provide that, Council President.
Okay. And I'm happy with the weatherization program. I see where we got the extension of grant funding. So I'm pretty much happy with that. I'm hoping that they have the necessary staff to get the work done, because I know that as people left, the work was left on just a few. So could you tell me where we are with, you know, the employees and the weatherization program?
Sure. I'd ask Alice to come up. She's been working on that staffing issue, and she probably has some good things to say.
Yeah, because they've been doing some great work, and then it, you know, took a little dive. And I know because I met with her and she told me what the issues were. So we're hoping that they're staffed up so they can get this work done.
So Council President Young, the staffing, we still have some issues within the weatherization department with staffing. We're actually filling a key role, which is our construction building supervisor, as well as an additional construction building inspector. One of the key areas where we're still actually looking for additional funding and need to address, which we weren't able to address this budget cycle, is the funding for our central intake application and processing staff. We found a solution for that for this year, which actually is utilizing some federal CDBG dollars with the work that it does for weatherization and for our rehab program in that central. But I'm still looking at next fiscal year, also putting in a request, like I did this year, for those staff to be general funded because of the key critical nature that they provide for the entire services for all three programs.
Okay. Thank you. And my final is just a, I don't know how to put it, but I know our nonprofits does a great job of providing services for the city of Baltimore, but we're looking at reducing property taxes. And as we move forward, please don't bring anything in unless it has a payment in lieu of taxes, because we could no longer keep giving away the shop to the nonprofits and expect to lower our property tax rate for the people who actually live here. Because most of the nonprofits that I deal with, most of them don't live here. Okay? And I appreciate the work they do. But our citizens in Baltimore want a tax break. So please, the Chair of Taxes and Finance, any properties come that's going to a nonprofit that don't have a payment in lieu of taxes will not get sold.
Thank you.
So just to. No, we got you. So just to be clear, because we have a running tally of questions. Question 52 is related to Council President's question related to homeownership. And so we'll make certain that that's clear. Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you. I would like to mention the School Age Childcare Center that is on page 269, serving of the capacity of 80 children divided between Northwood Elementary Middle School and Waverly Elementary Middle School. I mention it because I just, for the first time, realized that this is once again the last time that the Budget Bureau will ever do this. And I would just like to say, first of all, Housing has been wonderful as, at leading this program, because Wreckin' Parks gave it up and Housing stepped in and has always supported it and managed it beautifully. And what is it? It's what used to be everywhere. It's what used to be everywhere in all of our schools, which is, in the school itself, it is a program which goes from six in the morning to six at night. Children of working parents and families can be dropped off as early as six in the morning if parents have to get to work. And they can be, stay there, oh, they get walked to their classes when they begin, they get picked up from their classes, they then can stay till six o'clock doing activities. It goes all summer long for those same children that are involved, so that, guess what? It lets people have jobs. Anyone who does a survey will be glad to tell you, there's nothing like it anywhere else, certainly in my district, because we've had to go scrambling for alternatives so many times, because it never shows up in the budget and always has to be begged and prayed back in. What it is, is what should be in every school, certainly elementary schools, so that we who keep talking about people being able to work can give people a chance to work without having their kids loose and worrying about what's happening to the children. It's just common sense if you're a parent. You gotta work? You gotta take care of your children? How do you afford it? You afford it because of programs like this, which got phased out. So I'm tired of fighting for it. We should have it in every school and not be trying to save the two remnants every single year. But thank to the mayor, it's back in this budget for this year. And we always have our posters in the closet for the next battle. We will not let this program die in deed. We want to see it increase. The other thing, it's a question, and it's a complicated one, and I'll try to keep it simple, just to throw it out. Wherever I go, especially men, especially men in their, like, 40s, 50s, say, whatever happened to the dollar program, the dollar house program? Now, I've met with gentlemen in the trades, African-American tradespeople who are a group, it's not a union or anything, it's just a group of friends, who talk about a dollar house program as well. But their dollar house programs a little different. What is common to what people are saying about whatever happened to the dollar house program is the following. Especially men, I'm not, just my experience, especially men who may be working but have limited means to buy a house, believe that if they had the kind of shot they had in Otterbyne and Fells Point, not for historic levels of rehab, but for up to code levels of rehab, they could do it. They could afford, the tradespeople I met with, when they talk about it, they mean we can do these, we can rehab and make it affordable for people like us to buy. And what other people mean is, I could, the way it worked, I could do that as long as we could just have to bring it up to code and then I could finish the details later. So, you know, use and occupancy being the goal. The idea of the dollar house program, it relied on 3% federal money, but there are still bonds out there that we could go after as part of a larger bond. It depended on those loans. But basically, what happened was you could not take title until you met, until you completed the, you had access to engineers and architects who contracted with the city. You could borrow money to pay for the rehab, and that would be what you would be owing, but it was 3% money. And then if, once you reached the livability of that house, then what, then you could take title to it. If you didn't ever get there, there was a time limit, and see you later, alligator, we gotta rehab these houses. And they were reimbursed, and there weren't many people who didn't make it all the way. But there should, but so what it is, is it's self-reliance and the opportunity to get their, people, especially men, get their hands on some of these vacancies in the company of others that, in a block, for example, and just do it up to code and own something that they actually had their hands in making. It's really, really important. So I just want to throw that out there, where I know if I'm hearing it, you're hearing it, and it doesn't go away. It's kind of like PAL centers. They just don't go away in people's, I liked that. And this is one of that, I liked that. If we could come up with something on a pilot basis that gave, give all these guys a chance to be self-sufficient and make a home for their families in a, in a good way, in the company of others, because the best dollar houses were the ones where it was a group effort in a block or a neighborhood. The scattered site, like in Res Hill, had some, a lot of successes, but you didn't have that commonality and collegiality. So I'll be talking about that. In fact, I'll probably bring in just a resolution to say, how could we do this? And thank you very much for the opportunity to throw it out there.
Colleagues, I just want to remind everyone, it's 2:41 right now. In an effort to stay on schedule, the session is scheduled to end at 3:00 PM, and then we have blight elimination next. So if you could all do your very best to help expedite questions. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions for housing. A couple of years ago, we had a pretty significant scandal in sex for repairs. I am wondering what's been done to ensure that that never happens again?
We could have that discussion. It's not related to the budget, that's on the Housing Authority side. Did you want to have that discussion?
Mr. Braverman, we have, and Councilman Cohen, if we could hold off on that question, because we have housing coming back in at 4:00 PM for all of their services, just to make sure we stay on scope here. And perhaps, Michael and Councilman Cohen, we could sidebar before that 4:00 PM session just to talk through that at a high level and whether or not this is appropriate forum for that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. It's on the Housing Authority side, not in this general, not in this operating budget discussion, but I'd be happy to have that discussion with you.
Got you. And then, any efforts being made to, I know we have a large list of folks awaiting Section 8 vouchers. Any efforts from the Housing Department to move along in that list?
Again, that's a Housing Authority issue, completely separated from the operating budget. But again, that in particular is a federal government allocation, and, you know, the winds aren't blowing in the direction to increase that allocation. So there are as many people leased up in Section 8 as we have money for. And if we want to, that's a national housing priority that seems to have gotten lost. But like all public housing issues, it's completely scalable, depending on how much money that we get. I would say, just, it's worth noting that, and Siglindie is here, who's our CFO for the agency, but there is $140 million a year in landlord payments coming in from the federal government right now in Baltimore City that's helping to provide, it's something in the range of 15,000 Section 8 residences. And I feel relatively, relatively comfortable that because that $140 million payment's coming in to property owners, we may not see that program end as, you know, as other programs are being threatened with a zero budget, but it is completely budget-dependent. Is there anything you wanted to add, Siglindie?
Ma'am, if you could come up to the microphone, please.
HUD actually allocates a little over $200 million to the Housing Authority of Baltimore City for landlord engagements, of which the $141 million goes to the Housing Authority of Baltimore City directly. The rest, the $50 million goes to Baltimore Regional, which is an additional amount of funds being made available for housing in Baltimore City and its surrounding areas. The budget, as Michael has explained, is completely either expandable or contractable in regards to the receipt of funds that you receive from HUD. 17 budget has been set and the funds will flow through September 2017. The funds to be allocated for 2018, which begins the federal fiscal year in 2018, has not been set, and it can be expected that the funds will further contract and not expand. Therefore, we're going to carefully monitor and continue to attrit in order to allow individuals that are currently in the program to remain in the program and only work through attrition and other means to permit the eligible parties that are in the program to remain in the program without having to actually release them from the program. So 2018, we will not know until National Housing and HUD makes additional information available to us, which we will not know probably until the fall. But until such time, we do everything that we can to continue just deal with the small amount of attrition.
Thank you.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes, good afternoon. Just two questions for housing, really quickly. So I see that you have, under homeownership, there's the part-time community aid, which is funded about $30,000. Doesn't seem like a crazy amount. Just curious about some of the activities around the homeownership aid.
Alice? Thank you.
Sorry, can you repeat?
Just the responsibilities for the part-time community aid, how is that, what they do in terms of homeownership?
The part-time community aid at the time actually now helps assist with the incoming applications and initial review and collection of documents that are required. So we have one, two, three, under, basically, real estate agent positions that act as underwriters for each program, and the community aid assists currently part-time with some of the initial items that are coming in for those.
Got it. And then just a second question, not for homeownership, but under the home program, just looking at some of the target, or the FY17 and 18 numbers in terms of units, looks like they're both at 173, and then it's down from 273 in terms of units produced back in FY16. Just curious about the changeover in terms of the number?
Okay, so we're looking at the units, the unit count, you're looking at the FY17 target going down to 173?
Right, for 17 and 18, yes.
Right. The target is set at that, if you look at the other targets, you see the actual exceeds it. I think FY17 will probably hit close to 200, depending if some of the, one of the deals right now settles before the end of the month. Otherwise, we'll be probably in the 150 range, just depends on when the settlement occurs for one of the pending deals. Would that be fair to say, Peter?
The number varies on your budget, what comes in.
Right. So Peter's, Peter's saying that our money is available to leverage these deals. It seems to be roughly constant, but it is, it's dependent upon the, our affordable housing nonprofit partners and the work that they do, and when those units are, when they're closing those deals with us. So I feel reasonably comfortable, if one closes by the end of June, we'll be at 200.
Okay, so these numbers are more so like conservative sort of baseline, and then you could, you're more likely exceed it?
Right, but it aggregates. I mean, if you're looking at, if you aggregate the actuals over the past four years, you're at close to 1,200 units of new affordable housing in Baltimore City just over the past four years leveraged with this home money.
Mm-hmm.
Peter Engel wants me to mention, in light of what Councilman Cohen mentioned, that in the President's budget, home is zeroed out. So that this is, we're talking about 1,200 units leveraged over the past four years, it is zeroed out. So what happens in the actual Congress remains to be seen, but that's what's in the budget.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment and then just one question. My comment, I just first want to thank you, Acting Director Braverman, for just your leadership in holding up the fort, sort of say, until every, all the changes of the administration gets into effect. I wish you success.
Thank you. I would turn to my team and thank them in return, everyone you see here, for rallying during this time.
And that just shows your leadership and keeping an, you have always been a person to keep an even keel when council members or constituents seem to just have a loose cannon from time to time, because I fit that on occasion.
I've emailed you myself as a constituent in the same mode, if you recall, as my councilman.
Yes, exactly. And I also want to give kudos to Sharon DeBoing for, you know, being an excellent liaison and answering, responding is just a, just is a wonderful thing to have when you get a response right away in trying to help. And then my question, I guess it's a weatherization thing. I've had a couple of calls with seniors that have developed mold in their widows that now have sole ownership of their homes on fixed incomes. This one senior basically called the office and just upset that her insurance wouldn't help, trying to reach out. I don't know if there is some type of loan or a program to help specifically with an aging home with mold.
We do have deferred loan programs that can be helpful. Alice, do you want to jump in? Alice, this team does this at scale.
Back again. Service 750, which is our Housing Rehabilitation Services Program, that's where a deferred loan under that program will come into effect to assist with mold remediation. Unfortunately, under our weatherization program, both state and federal funding does not allow for us to address mold. So we actually end up having to defer our clients who would be qualified for weatherization if there's mold, asbestos, knob and tube wiring, and a number of other issues, water infiltration in the home. So often, that's where the question goes that Councilman Pinkett asks in terms of programs, homeowner that's receiving multiple services, if they're deferred from weatherization for one of those items, and we refer them to Housing Rehabilitation Services to look at their income eligibility, as well as asset tests, as well as their home valuation in terms of what equity is in the home. And then they go through an approval process to receive a deferred loan to address some of those issues. One of the things that has been is that the Customer Investment Fund money for the last four years has given us a flexible amount of money that we could use for mold remediation, knob and tube wiring removal, and some of those other items, where there wasn't a loan that was needed and you didn't have to qualify. Because we have plenty of homeowners, seniors in particular, where they have no equity left in their home, they still have these issues. And then my hands are tied with the program requirements by the federal government and the state in terms of, at that point, we're kind of at the, there is no separate funding source, and there's no general fund, funding source to allow for some of that flexibility to occur to remediate some of those problems.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Stokes?
This question is for Live Baltimore. I'm reading your service description, which is great, but, you know, we have a lot of gaps in housing in the most distressed neighborhoods. Do you target these neighborhoods for development? And if so, if you don't, why not? Because I'm looking at your description, you do a lot of homeownership rental, and there are a lot of gaps in the most distressed neighborhood. Do you actually target those neighborhoods also?
That's a great question. So, you know, our platform is kind of a tiered thing, so just general information, all neighborhoods are represented on our website, so that there is at least a basic degree of information available about those neighborhoods. As we look with our programming, one of the things we can see is how do we measure, you know, are we being citywide? And so for FY16, when we say the number of Live Baltimore customers who purchased a home in the city, we can track that, that was 188 different neighborhoods. And so there is, and that will range between one home purchase to multiple, but- And so there is, and that will range between one home purchase to multiple, but what we look for is that we really try to target those neighborhoods that are on the cusp or that are transitional, that show incredible promise, you know, incredible value but might be needing some investment. And so we want to try to bring our buyers, and our buyers will range from, you know, anywhere from $25,000 and up, you know, home purchase wise. And so we, we really try to ensure that the programming is incurring in neighborhoods that are not deemed kind of the stable or the incredibly strong, but really those that are stable but undervalued. And then for the distressed, we will often try to work with our friends, our partners at housing, either through the Vacants to Value program especially, and try to leverage efforts by that program to introduce buyers to that area. Oftentimes, the Vacants to Value program has been working in areas that were deemed distressed or are coming out of distress. And so we want to make sure that we're leveraging that. So for an example, this July, we're doing one of our home buying events in Barclay. Given the work that Telisys and V2V program has done, we want to make sure that people aren't just passing through that neighborhood, but are actually stopping in there. So that's an example of a neighborhood that's probably deemed distressed, but is not as distressed.
Well, Barclay is not that much distressed. I'm talking about neighborhoods like, well, I'm talking about like neighborhoods like New Greenmount West. You're doing a lot of development on the west side of Greenmount, and you have the east side that's just totally been ignored. If you have that kind of development on one side of the street, I thought it would only be your group, Live Baltimore, because you got a great school, you got some good amenities there. Why don't, can't you look at the east side of Greenmount and kind of, that development can just, because it's right across the street?
Absolutely. No, we are, we're obviously open to exploring all neighborhoods and either through our bus tours or our walking tour. So we are, we really just rely on a working relationship with the neighborhood and with housing. So we're never, if there is an engaging community, or if you like introduce us to a community, we're always open to a working partner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. I guess on a similar note, I know there was mention of the potential to kind of modify how some of the housing incentives work, the home buying incentives. Is there somebody working in the Housing Department on the development or aiding in the development of community land trusts? And can our home buying incentives be in any way modified to help the establishment of community land trusts?
Without, without getting into the specific about our home buying incentives, I could say that that's on the radar screen and Julie's been attending for the Department of Housing and Community Development most of the meetings that have been going on to sort of explore how that might work to benefit Baltimore City. So the short answer is it's still in a sort of exploratory phase and we're playing a role in that. So how, where, how it exactly lands, we'll see over time.
Can you talk about that a little bit more, Julie?
Can I do it from here?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, there are a number of groups that are talking about land trusts, so we're engaged in different ways. I've been working primarily with the group that's looking at, through Central Baltimore Partnership as a host.
Speak a little more directly.
With the members of the Baltimore Housing Roundtable. We're, we're looking at ways to make that work. There are a number of different models. I know they've hired an attorney who established the land trust in Frederick to help with the documents. So they're looking at places where it could work. And I know that just this week, we received an application, or we're talking about an application that's going to be submitted on behalf of, I believe it's the Charm City Land Trust, is that right? Do you recall that? I think so. It came in through Peter, so I'm not sure which group he's working. But we're, I mean, we're interested in preserving affordability as markets improve and looking at ways to make that available for as many people, or is interested in that type of housing model.
I just want to, I guess I want to point out how strongly I support land trusts as a model for investment that is retained in community, the potential for, you know, every time we give out a $5,000 home buying incentive to an individual home buyer, if that individual stays in that home for 10 years and then sells the house, that $5,000 becomes a profit for that individual that is not retained in the community, by the community, for the community. Being able to incentivize how home buying and homeownership that directly invests in community retention means that we are in a long, in the long term, continuing to retain that wealth and stake in the community and strengthen community without subsidizing the wealth growth of individuals. So I really appreciate any work and all the work that's being done on this. I know it's become a, you know, a growing conversation over the last couple of years citywide. And I would be really thankful to have you work with some of the folks in particular on the Hamilton area, because I know that we have a number of properties that just sit and sit and sit vacant, some for years now, despite being in 21214, one of the best valued zip codes in the state. They just sit and we seem to not be able to take them off the rolls. So I appreciate the work on that. While I was sitting, I'll just also note that while I was sitting here yesterday, my girlfriend sent me a clip from the 1975 News American of how her family was awarded both a dollar house and won a tax sale for 1,700 bucks on blithe wood. In the same year.
That about wraps this. Steve Gondal, could you come up for a second? You'll see my tweet later, but I just wanted to publicly drag you up here. Thank you for your service to the city. For those of you who don't know, Steve has been a stalwart at Live Baltimore and is moving out of state on the 28th. But I'm pretty confident that Live Baltimore is in good hands with Annie Millie. So thank you for your service to the city, Steve.
Thank you, Councilman.
My tweet literally said dragged you up to the city council for your last time. Full disclosure. All right, that concludes the housing panel. We're going to jump right into blight elimination. We've got HCD, DPW, Real Estate, and CHAP. This panel is scheduled to go from three to four. I'm sure that there are other questions for HCD. We're going to address those during the following panel, which will be from four to five PM. So if we could just focus, colleagues, please focus on issues related to blight elimination. I am joined today by Councilman Leon Pinkett, Vice Chair of the Committee from the Seventh District, to my right. Councilwoman Shannon Sneed from the Thirteenth District. Councilman John Bullock, Chair of the Housing and Urban Development Committee from the Ninth District. Councilman Zee Cohen from the First District. Vice President Sharon Green Middleton from the Sixth District. To my immediate left, Councilman Robert Stokes from the Twelfth. Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the Third. Councilman Chris Burnett from the Eighth. Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the Fourteenth. And Councilman Brandon Scott from the Second District. Also joined by Marguerite Curran, staff to the committee. To my right, the mayor is being represented by Karan Banks. Councilman Bill Henry from the Fourth District just walked in. So we have four agencies testifying today. We also have Madam Comptroller Joan Pratt. My apologies, ma'am, thank you for joining us today. For this panel, we've got four agencies. Can we make sure we have, we have CHAP, we have Real Estate, we have Housing, and we have DPW, so we are good to go. For agency officials, please be sure to speak into the mic. If you are not speaking into the mic, I am going to, as politely or impolitely as possible, interrupt you and ask you to please speak into the mic, because this is being livestreamed on TV and Charm TV cannot hear you unless you are speaking into the mic. I'm going to ask each agency to give a quick, under five-minute presentation. Agency heads, please introduce your staff. Michael, if we could start with you, please.
Sure. Should I reintroduce my staff, Councilman?
Yeah, real quickly. And if you guys could just raise your hand or jump up, do a jumping jack, whatever you deem appropriate.
Okay, immediately to my right is Julie Day, as our Acting Chief of Staff. Behind me is Nadia Morgan, who's the Chief Administrative Officer in the Permits and Code Enforcement Division. Here now, Councilman Henry is Jason Hessler, who, you know, half the time runs our litigation section and the other half our demolition section. Bill Colbert, we gave him a standing ovation before, who is last day here as his, as the, as our Finance Director for DHCD. Jeff Martin, who also works in the DHCD finance side, will be taking over, running the operation. Siglinde is no longer here. Behind Nadia is Alice Kennedy, who runs our Division of Green, Healthy, and Sustainable Homes. Did I miss anyone? And Wendy in the far corner, sorry, Wendy Redford, who is our Acting Director of our Land Resources Division, Acting Deputy Commissioner. Thank you, Wendy. All right, that's my team. I didn't leave anyone out. And again, since we got to, we're going to go to questions and most of our questions are going to wait for the next hour, I'm going to very quickly go through. Housing code enforcement is the title for the service, but the service includes all of our housing inspection operations, all of our code enforcement litigation, that is, you know, the, all the entire receivership program and the efforts to go beyond the violation notices and the citations, which make us so effective. And I know litigation is slow, Councilman Dorsey, but we usually, we usually prevail in the end. And also our Investigations Unit, we have a, we have a sort of world-class investigations operation, and our demolition section. So all this is within this particular service. And blight elimination is a component part of the work that we do. We have a large inventory of, of homes and lots. We have a tremendous number of creative programs to get those lots and those buildings out onto the street for Mayor, Councilman Clark, a dollar if that's what it takes, or nothing if that's what it takes, but to move that inventory. And to do the whole block demolition that Baltimore does, it requires acquisition and relocation, and the service is here in blight elimination to assemble parcels for redevelopment that occurs here in this service. So there's a lot of contact, a lot of good stories about people who, communities who have whole block demolition and neighbors who have gotten a very positive experience from being relocated from a block of vacants to, you know, a home with real equity that's, you know, on a viable block. So that's the short version. Did I leave anything out, Wendy? No, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Michael. John? You can, if you guys want to sit at your desk or whatever you're more comfortable with.
Greetings again, Council Chair, Council Members.
Pull that up. Thanks, John.
Greetings again, Council Chair, Council Members. Members of my team today are Ms. Tanya Simmons, Chief Tanya Simmons, Chief Yvonne Moore Jackson. We have our CFO Officer back here, Mr. Troy Brogdon, and Ms. Stephanie Ennells, Marsha Collins, Kristen, and the Deputy Director, Estelle Thompson. So I'm here to talk about Service 662. This service provides boarding, rat control services to vac- Thank you, sir. There we go. This service provides cleaning, boarding, rat control services to vacant, unoccupied properties that are cited by the city's housing inspectors. The budget includes 1.46 million in CDBG grant funds for cleaning and boarding of vacant properties. Property lien revenue in the amount of 1.5 million will be transferred to the city's central revenue account. With the proactive rat abatement program in place, we expect to see a drop in the number of boroughs in the city's alleys and city-owned lots and expect to bait 25,000 boroughs in fiscal 2018 compared to 47,000 baited in fiscal 2015. The cost for the cleaning and boarding activities under this service are assisted with the CDBG funds of 1.4 million in fiscal 2018. So that's the short, the short version of Service 662.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Real Estate, Walter.
Good afternoon, Walter Horton, Department of Real Estate. Service number 132. With me today, as you already mentioned, is the Comptroller Joan Pratt. She heads up the Department of Real Estate. Stuart Beckham, who's an assistant with the Office of the Comptroller, and Dannese Lewis as well. The Office of the Department of Real Estate, as I mentioned, is under the Comptroller's jurisdiction. Our service number is 132. Our recommended FY 18 budget is 1.17134. The city charter dictates that the Comptroller be responsible for the proper conduct of management and operation of the Department of Real Estate. The mission for the Department of Real Estate is to ensure that the best interest of the city is obtained on fiscally prudent real estate transactions, which includes the acquisition of real property, sales, leases, exchanges, loans, polits, TIFs, and other disposition of real properties. The department works very closely with the Department of Housing, BDC, and DHCD in accomplishing their mission. The department achieves its mission through the following: lease administration, real property appraisals, tax sale, disposition of city-owned properties, and due diligence review for real estate-related transactions that come to the Board of Earnings. Working collaboratively with the city agencies on preparing option agreements, arranging and attending settlements on real, real property acquisitions, the Department of Real Estate is instrumental in acquiring 234 vacant properties for projects such as park heights, the whole block demolition, hiking trails. Thank you. Hiking trails for the Department of Recreation and Park. We've performed close to 300 appraisals and appraisal reviews for acquisition and disposition of city-owned properties that have resulted in savings of $55,000 to various city agencies. Working with the Department of Housing and Community Development, Real Estate has 50 lots in the Adopt a Lot program for this fiscal year-to-date. Individual community associations maintain these lots with the anticipation that in time, some of these lots will be ready for inclusion in the Baltimore Green Space Program. We also have sold 60 tax sale certificates on vacant land, vacant buildings, with the goal that these properties will return to the tax rolls as rehab units, parking spaces, and green spaces. These sales have generated $170,000 in revenue. In FY 18, the Department of Real Estate will continue the above activities, which will save taxpayers dollars and generate revenue and improve the quality of life for residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Next up, CHAP, Eric?
Thank you for this opportunity. See if I get it, yes. We're here, Service 762, requesting $1,328,43. We are a, we have very strong blight elimination tools. The first one is the tax, local historic preservation tax credit. To date, we started in 1997 and to date, we have about 4,600 applications of it that have gone through the process. We have helped leverage over $850 million. Other things that we do, we create local historic districts and we conduct design review in those districts to ensure that rehabilitation is of the highest quality possible. We help with HCD, our partners in Department of Planning, and demolition decisions and also stabilization decisions. I can't think that there's probably, a day doesn't go by while I'm not talking with Commissioner Braverman. We do a lot of preservation-based economic development. We help work with BDC and the Baltimore National Heritage Area in terms of creating a cultural tourism in the city of Baltimore. And we currently, right now, we're about 312 preliminary reviews for this year with- with our local tax credit, and about that, a little bit more than that in terms of the final certification. And we're heading over 800 authorizations who proceeds we have done this year. Thank you.
Walter, I have a, I realize that I made an error when I scheduled these hearings, because one of the things that I wanted to talk about on the record was the, you know, the DAS utility installations. There's been a number of issues with those. I'm gonna go ahead and just ask for a request for documentation for the committee, and then we can talk offline. But did real estate do any analysis when they looked at negotiating that deal? And the reason I ask that is because it seems that the utility provider has been given very extremely favorable terms on that deal. So I'm wondering what they are receiving in terms of, you know, what happens in other cities.
I can give you some detailed documentation. We hired a consultant. The Department of Transportation, I believe, actually paid for a consultant to work with us, to provide us with detailed information on what the rates were going in other cities. And based on that, that's how we came up with our determination for the pricing structure.
So I should probably start with DOT, then?
Well, it's a collaborative effort, yes.
Okay. Margaret, can you add that? What number is that? 53, got it. Analysis of DAS utility installation. Councilwoman Snead?
Thank you, Chairman. My question is for abandoned blight, blight elimination, I guess it should fall under there. And I wanted to know, out of all the vacancies, I feel like we are constantly reboarding some of the same properties over and over again. So I'm wondering, how many people are on that team when we think of staff of the positions? How many of those folks just do boarding up homes?
Currently, right now, we have three boarding crews, citywide.
And so when you say three crews, citywide, how many on each crew?
There are two persons per crew.
And so, and when we are boarding up these homes, I'm just wondering, in terms of nails and what we're using, does it matter? Are we using nails? Are we using screws? Because I just feel like they're just pulling boards right back off the home.
So we try to get creative to combat, you know, the reboarding. We're now using, we're now making sure that we cut the wood to fit into the frame, and we're using screws. But unfortunately, that doesn't stop individuals who really want to get into these vacant properties to get in. But before that, we were using just, you know, the hammer nail approach. Now we're using the, cut it to fit the frame and putting screws in.
And so, because it seems like, I'm always seeing, I walk my district constantly, and I'm like, wow, here's another one. And so, when inspectors are walking these areas, are they also calling in and reporting some of this stuff as well? Because I feel like some things have been there for over a week and over a month. Are they calling in these items?
Yes, that's part of the SOP for my folks, to call in any city services needed as they patrol their routes, so that we can get the services out there and get things abated.
And so, out of staff, how many inspectors fall into those positions as well? Like, how many citywide?
Well, when I'm talking about inspectors, I'm talking about the supervisors that actually work for DPW as they patrol their routes, the street and alley cleaning crews. We have about 18 mixed refuse supervisors, about another 10 street and alley supervisors. So the grand total would be about 30, 35 folks on the street.
And would you agree that you need more, or is it more manpower on the streets? Or is it a little bit of both?
Well, I think as a city as a whole, you know, we have inspectors in every department. Anybody out there that's walking up down the alley, anybody that's repairing a curb can actually create a service request for city services. So to answer your question, it's not necessarily that I need more inspectors, but as a whole, we can do a lot more.
And so, if I, if you were to come out with me, and something is so clear, and that you would have said that an inspector was here yesterday, is there any, like, warnings, I guess, or penalties, or something to say, hey, you walked right past this, you didn't see this? A blind man could see that something is wrong, that you shouldn't have walked past. Is there some type of discipline or something for folks to see who don't, who are just walking past and just thinking, yeah, this is normal, folks live like this in this neighborhood?
We're constantly training and retraining, and that is part of the training. But I would defer to HCD as far as inspectors routinely inspecting buildings for, you know, violations of buildings for services that need rendering. That's gonna actually fall underneath of housing.
And out of those teams, how many of them are city residents?
I can't answer that. I couldn't give you that answer.
Could you let me, could we write that down and find out of how many of those inspectors actually live in the city, Baltimore city residents? Thank you.
So that'd be question 54.
I'm sorry, did I miss something?
No, we're just, we're just keeping a tally of the questions. We're good.
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes, good afternoon. So I have a couple of questions for housing. So first, looking at the monies that are allotted for demolition. So it looks like you're looking at 11.5 for capital funding, 3 million from the state through Project Core. I know that there's also 7 million that's allocated in terms of whole block demolition. Could you just, and I know it can be sort of rough numbers, but could you talk, speak to the amount of houses that you think you can demolish with that amount of money? I mean, I know it varies, but what are we looking at here?
Well, we're, we probably hit close to over 500 in calendar year 16. And we'll probably do at least that number, if not more, in calendar year 17. But we're also partnering with the state, so the state will be doing several hundred as well during that course of time. But all the money, unlike Detroit, where a dollar for demo goes into a demolition, in Baltimore City, you know, we do, we do emergency demolitions to protect the public safety. We have to build a wall in almost all of those cases. So some amount of money that you might spend for demolition is then going to build a wall. We do some planned constituent-driven demolitions and stabilizations, which are almost, often are not whole block demolitions, not constituent-driven. Then we have a whole block strategic demolition program, which will require some amount of acquisition and relocation, which is expensive. It produces the best result, and it's the most strategic and best outcome for the city. But it's very expensive when compared to a jurisdiction that just spends a dollar for demo on demo. We're building walls, or we're relocating people, and buying new homes for them. So it's expensive here, and we thank the governor for the additional dollars. But, you know, unlike cities like Detroit, who get several hundred million in money from the federal government in reprogrammed TARP funds, we were not a hardest-hit state. So where Baltimore has a huge need, and we're meeting it in the most strategic and the way, and in a way that protects public safety, but it's expensive.
And I definitely appreciate the work that you're doing at housing. We get to talk fairly often, and so both you and your team, Jason and Julie, got a couple of questions, too. And some of this is also just for the edification of the rest of the committee and the council as well. So one of the issues that comes, that has come up, and you've mentioned this briefly, in terms of having money from both the state and having some local monies as far as demolition, there's also been some differences in terms of who's doing the demolition, in terms of the contractors, and then also some of the conditions. So number one, can you speak to how much we're spending on some of the contractors to do this work? And then also, and I know Jason's gotten a couple of messages around this in terms of some of the conditions following demolitions, and how we're keeping some of those contractors accountable for their work, for the finished product in these communities?
So Baltimore, we contract a few different ways. So it's all contracted out, and we have, for whole block demolition, we obviously can get a little better price, because you're mobilizing fewer places, and you're not doing any walls. So we have a separate contract for that, to get best value. We have a deconstruction contract. That is, in our opinion, one of the, we are sort of a national leader in that regard, in that we are able to procure demolition services in a way. So we just talked about how much money demolition costs. How do we do that in a way that creates jobs in Baltimore City for some of the most difficult folks to employ, and for those reentering after a stay in incarceration? And how do we jumpstart the industry and the waste stream material? So we are a pioneer in that. We have a contract to do demolition by deconstruction, and it's competitive, which is what no other jurisdiction's been able to achieve. And we can thank our, the winning bidder is Humana in town. We really can thank them for being able to put together a program to bid competitively. We also have a sort of a emergence, we have a contract for this, this sort of more scattered onesie-twosie demos that includes the emergency demolitions. So there's, and for the whole block and the onesie-twosies, there are several contractors who are awarded it, and we give the work out in priority to the lowest bidder. Now, the issue you raised about the site, that we're working with the Finance Department, Bureau of Purchases, to document every time that we can. I mean, it's a tremendous amount of work to document everything on the back end, but your constituents do most of the job for us. I only say that facetiously. We are out there photographing it as well. We are aware of some of the conditions that were left. I will say that the emergency demolitions that we did over the past year exacerbated this, I mean, to an order of magnitude we hadn't seen. We do like 20 emergency demos a year. We did 300 in calendar year 16, and we overwhelmed our contractor. And so, there was a bit of a devil's bargain, get down the unsafe condition, and come back later and clean the site. That's behind us now, and we're still seeing some conditions that we're not satisfied with, and we're documenting.
Got it. And then the last question around the 3 million for the Affordable Housing Fund, how do you anticipate that being used?
We would anticipate using it, and in very much the same way we use the home money. We were hoping to do that in addition to the home money, and not in the absence of the home money. But it is to leverage the construction of new affordable housing units in Baltimore City, making sure that it's like $1 for another 10 or more. Peter's not here, but it's probably, it's more than an order of 1 to 10.
I have a joint question for both Mr. Braverman and Mr. Chalmers. So the first is on the housing end. Do we have, is it a public-facing database of all of the properties that have, that are, that have a vacant notice on them?
Yes, it is, on the web, in a bunch of different locations, including Open Baltimore.
Okay. Sharon, can you send me the one that's like the CL, CE, LS, that link?
There's a mapping tool that shows all the vacancies as well.
Okay, I was looking-
If you wanted just a database of them.
Yeah, where I could just search by address, and it tells me yea or nay.
You could do that in the mapping tool, or you could go to the big database on Open. We'll give you all of them.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Sharon. And then, I'll follow up with Sharon. Thank you. And then, John, the, do we have data on the number of, I'm assuming it's a 3-1-1 category for boarded-up windows? Sometimes I'm lazy, and I just email it to you guys, and you guys are great, because you take care of it right away. Was there a 3-1-1 category for that? And is that on Open Baltimore?
So there is a 3-1-1 category. That's where the service request originates, and then from that category, it's sent over to the chip system, then it's rerouted back to us. But to answer your question, yes.
So we can, Councilman Scott, we'd be able to see that on Open Baltimore, right? The number of requests for boarding up houses? Got it. All right, thank you. Councilman Henry?
Thank you. Before I pick up on the high grass and weeds, 3-1-1, City Stat conversation that we started yesterday, I was prompted by the proactive rat abatement to revisit a longstanding frustration of mine, which is, I'm not sure if we mean by proactive rat abatement that what I've been trying to bring about now for a couple of years. What we have been doing is, if somebody reports rat burrows on a neighbor's property, we go out, we inspect, we go, yeah, there are rat burrows there on your neighbor's property. And we leave a card on the neighbor's door saying, please sign this form giving us permission to come onto your property and put poison in your burrows. And if they don't send the card back, we don't do anything, except I think we do, from a 3-1-1 perspective, mark it as closed, because we left the little thing on their door. For a couple of years now, I've been trying to find out why we can't do it the other way around, where we leave a card that says, unless you send us this card explaining why we shouldn't come back, because you're gonna take care of this, I'm gonna take care of this myself, we will be back in five business days to put poison in your burrows. And if you have a really good reason for why we shouldn't do that, please fill it out this card and send it back. And my understanding, from what we've been told so far about what proactive rat abatement is going to mean, doesn't sound like that. So will, can we do this? And if not, because I'm also noticing in the metrics that we're talking about a target number of half of what we actually did in FY15, which is, you know, again, we dropped down to that smaller number in the actuals in FY16. And I'm trying to get a sense of, are we purposely shooting to accomplish less because you're being given less resources by finance? And so, you're working to do what you can do with what you're given? Or do you really honestly think that there's only half as much work to be done, such that you only asked finance for half as much money?
So to answer your first question, we can't legally go onto any private property without the authority?
The Health Commissioner has the authority, as a public health official, to do that. And we used to be able to do this when rat abatement was handled out of health. But when it got moved over to DPW, no one has figured out, in three years of my asking, how to take the Health Department's, the Health Commissioner's public health authority and let you use it. And I am convinced, based on the fact that this is done in other places, I'm convinced that it is possible. But why does it not seem to be a priority for us to figure out how to do it? And I don't mean to drop this on you, Mr. Chalmers, because I know this hasn't been sitting on your plate for three years. But it's been bouncing back and forth between DPW and now multiple Health Commissioners, and I'm not seeing any progress.
Well, my colleague just informed me that we do have that, there is a process in place where we can actually do that, but we have to go through the Health Department to get that done. I'm gonna have to look at that and revisit that with you to see what kind of strategy that we can come up with. But that's as much as I know right now.
But it can be done, and we can-
It can be done, it can be done in certain cases.
Okay, I would love to follow up with you offline, to see us move towards that level of proactive rat abatement.
Okay, and to answer the second part of that question, actually, our FY16 actuals were 26,000. And our target for FY18 is gonna be 25,000. We believe that a direct result of the municipal trash cans being out, and the fact that our rat abatement crews are systematically going through the city baiting, that those numbers are coming down. Active rat burrows are actually coming down. So that's the good news. But I will revisit-
Hey, I'm happy for good news. Not, haven't had a whole lot of that in the last day and a half, so thank you.
Well, I'm glad to give you some good news.
I'm happy for good news. Now, the second question, high grass and weeds. Okay, so this was a, this came up yesterday with 3-1-1 and City Stat. Basic example, you see a house, it's a, in the case that I'm thinking of, it's an unoccupied, private dwelling, occupied on each side, so that when you've got the first good rain, and then people go out and they mow their lawns, poof, a house appears that has high grass and weeds in the middle of the block. So you call into 3-1-1, it goes in as a high grass and weeds complaint, and inspector comes out- complaint, and inspector comes out, inspects it, puts a violation notice on the door saying you have 10 or 11 or 12 days or whatever to mow the grass. Currently, at that point, it's closed out as an SR number. And the... And it's a little unclear to me, and this was what we were trying to figure out, it's a little unclear to me whose decision it is policy-wise for the closeout to be at that point of first inspection. Because if the owner of the property does not mow the lawn, and the inspector comes back in 12 days, re-inspects, sees that it's still not done, they will then put in hopefully a work order to DPW to come out and mow that high grass and weeds. The ultimate goal is for it not to be treated as closed until the high grass and weeds are no longer high. So, at the very least, could we get the closure from code enforcement's perspective to not happen until reinspection? So, when the inspector goes out the second time and either sees that it has been mown or sees that they have to put in a work order, that's the point at which HCD would close it out. And this was something we were talking about with City Stat, if there could be a way so that automatically, when you put in the work order to DPW for mowing, that would automatically generate a second SR number so that we can track DPW's part of the work, which is to actually mow the lawn. This feels straightforward to me, but I understand that it's more complex than that. And so, could you walk me through the complexity?
Let me... Jason, you could take that. I'll just kick it off by saying two things. One, this is a moment to say thank you because in that example you just gave, you're talking about not a board up. You're talking about an unoccupied house, and getting that violation on the house is the first step in determining it to be a nuisance unoccupied house, which would then allow us to issue a vacant building notice and then have all the full range of police powers that we have to mitigate... To remediate that. So, thank you for that because that gets us on the right path that we need to be for the ultimate resolution. Now, before I turn it over to Jason, who's the expert on SRs, I just want to say that the nature of what we do in housing inspections is we identify... We go out, observe, inspect, document. But the actual... For everything that we do, it's about getting the owner to take... To do something or to enforce it through some other way. So, everything is always open, everything. We go out, we look at it. They don't... Nobody's fixing it the minute we're there. So, if we were to keep every SR open until there was closure, you know, we would have all of our SRs open. What we keep open is the violation notice until the activity is closed. Some of those violation notices... So, in the case of this example, the homeowner could take care of it, but we went there and issued the notice, and then we will re-inspect it. And then, we will request a work order if needed, but the citizen's going to think that we didn't do our job if we leave the work order open. I called for an SR. The SR's still open. So, what we... When we close the SR, it means that we did our initial part. And so, it would... That's the complication. It would... If we left the SR open, well, what you really want to know is, are we managing that... The reinspection on those notices that we're issuing to generate the work orders where necessary timely? And so, there's a way to track what you're looking for without, you know, attenuating the work orders. Excuse me, the SRs, pardon me.
Actually, well, so, two things. First of all, I completely get the fact that you want to distinguish between housing's responsibility and either the property owner or DPW's responsibility. That's why I get the idea that when you generate the work order to send this to DPW, that's when you're closing out the code enforcement's SR. You're closing that out. You're saying, "We've done our work. Now, the next part needs to be done by another agency," and you generate a new SR. But the first thing I would say is, I would also distinguish between some of the violation notices that you do, that you give out, are for things that the city is not going to step up and do for the property owner and then lean them. Like, if there's a... If the cornice is falling, or if there's a missing handrail, the city is not going to consider that a public health issue and go up. But high grass and weeds specifically is something where we've already made the determination that it's important that this be done, and we would rather do it ourselves and put a lien on the property than just wait for the owner to get around to abating it. So, that's the distinction I'm making for this one.
That's true. But the truth is, we're going to have... If we had to cut it once, we're going to have to cut it over and over again.
And each time you cut it, it'll count as a separate violation notice.
No, no, we wouldn't issue... We don't... Again, thanks to the council. The code says, "Where the city abates the violation, we do not have to abate the notice." So, we don't have to go through that endless cycle of creating a new notice. All we have to do is regularly re-inspect the notice.
So, but if you... So, okay, wait a minute.
Even though there's no high grass and weeds, the notice is outstanding because you don't get credit for the abatement as the homeowner.
So, if I have a property that... Say I'm a bad absentee landlord. I have a property where I just am never cutting the grass on this property.
We have a few of those.
Okay. If I... If the city gives me a violation notice, and then, because I don't do anything, the city mows the grass, then you have to wait until the next time the grass is high to inspect it again... No, to inspect it again and find that it still hasn't been abated. But if you never... If the city doesn't mow it, then how often can an inspector re-inspect on the same violation notice?
We re-inspect all the open notices on a regular frequency, all of them. So, I mean, we do a couple hundred thousand inspections every year.
Right. But I mean, like, is there any kind of legal limit so that, like, if an inspector comes out and sees, "You've got high grass and weeds here," they come back 12 days later, as per the thing, and say, "Oh, you still got them. So, you're in violation." Can they just come back every day that week and have five different violations?
Can I just interject? I just want to remind Councilman Henry that Councilwoman Middleton will have a hearing specifically on grass cutting through her resolution. So, you know, so we'll be able to flesh out a lot of these issues.
It won't get rid of me. We can talk about this at length another time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I want to remind my colleagues that it's 3:45. This session on blight elimination was to be scheduled until 4:00, so if we can be expeditious in our questions and comments. Mr. Braverman, I just had a couple of questions. One, it's related to Service 745. The performance measurement that relates to the value of private investment for FY16 reflects 44.7 million. Private... Very good. Thank you. Can you... And then, our targets are for $30 million in the next two fiscal cycles. Can you speak to where we're seeing that, you know, $45 million worth of investment and where we project to see future investment as a result of our efforts?
Well, the... This is measuring, you know, areas in target areas. So, it's not everywhere in the city. It's just the streamlined code enforcement areas and what we call the community development clusters, areas in distressed places in the city where we are making a concerted effort through vacancies to value to leverage reinvestment. So, in those areas, every violation notice that we issue for which somebody pulls a permit, the value of the work on that permit is calculated here.
So, are we seeing a higher level of investment in any particular targeted areas?
The streamlined... The community development clusters have been extraordinarily successful on the whole, and we're seeing, like, overall, a reduction. These are distressed areas, so they're high level of vacancy to begin with and vacant and board instructions. And we're seeing a reduction in the range of 30%, 35%, like a net decrease in that much. And that's just in the vacant and abandoned buildings. So, there's also residents investing in their own homes as a result, and some of that through the work that Alice's shop is doing, so... For which permits are obtained. In the streamlined code enforcement areas, it is varying. So, in some of our middle markets, you know, we are... We're seeing almost all the vacant buildings that we have targeted reinvested in, but still a relatively high rate of new vacancies coming up. So, we're not netting down in the same way across all the streamlined code enforcement areas, although we are eliminating the vacancies that we started with. So, we're seeing investment. It's calculated here, but are we stemming the tide? It's... That's different in different neighborhoods. Yes, on the east side, not so much in the northwest. And in northeast, we have continuing foreclosure-related issues driving vacancies.
Being that this tool is so successful, do you forecast or foresee other sections of this... Other distressed sections of the city that aren't currently a part of either the targeted area or development cluster area being included, you know, in the next couple of years?
Yes. I would say that, you know, Baltimore has some real strengths that are continuing to push out and grow, and we will see, you know, I will say, north of the tracks is clearly one. You know, I would say, you know, pushing out west, Bolton Hill, Madison Park, Marble Hill, Upton, hopefully from Heritage Crossing all the way up to Druid Heights, East Baltimore Midway. These are things just come to mind. And of course, we all have concerted effort on Park Heights and Park Circle up to Belvedere. So, yes, that's a yes.
Okay. Thank you. Just one other question. I think this is for Mr. Klein. Service 662 for vacant abandoned property, cleaning and boarding. One of the measures mentions the value of liens billed. Does that figure of 4.4 for FY16, does that reflect just what was billed or what was actually collected?
Just what was billed. We've been collecting about 1.5 million.
Okay. And so, are there things that we can do that would increase that percentage?
You know, if you'd like, I could provide a written response on that. I'd like to have a conversation with our friends in DPW about that.
Yeah. I mean, because it's great that we're billing it and I guess identifying that, but...
Yeah.
I mean, ultimately, the goal is to recoup, you know, or get as many as those funds.
Yeah. I mean, as you can imagine, you know, these are...
Yeah.
These are properties that... Where it's not easy to... You know, you can bill it.
Right.
But property owner maybe doesn't have money to pay. So, but I can provide an update on collections and any actions that are being taken or could be taken to increase that.
And since we only recoup about a third of what we bill, should we be investing more in, you know, doing the enforcements or whatever so that we can, you know, have more, you know, liens billed so that ultimately, we're collecting more revenue?
Right. We'll look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Colleagues, just as a reminder, 5:47 PM. Next up, we have Councilwoman Clark.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for being here. There are two things I would like to talk about briefly, if I may. And one is to pick up on the vice chairman's questions, code enforcement. And this is sort of like outsiders' look inside. And a question at the end of it is, what are we doing? Everybody who works in this agents... These agencies is wonderful and works all the time and does a wonderful job. But sometimes, when I'm asking code enforcement to go do something, I feel like I put myself in the place of an inspector. So, what do you do? This house is a mess. It's got trash. It's... Nobody ever cleans it up. The high grass and weeds, whatever. So, I go out, I write a citation. And that's not the only thing I do all that day. I do a lot of that all that day. And then, I go back and I record it. And I've never quite gotten straight about some fines are immediate and some are, you get them in a certain number of days if you don't comply. But in any event, somebody gets a citation, they get a fine. Nothing much happens. I'm not saying all the time. I'm not criticizing the agency. I have never known, you know, people who worked harder or smarter, really. I'm just looking at the system. So, then, nothing happens, really. Maybe the grass gets cut, but it grows right up again, and the conditions are the same. So, back we go. So, then, what we try to do from... That's the inspector's job. Every day, she goes out, she writes citations, she cares about things, and she doesn't see things matter changing much from the citations. Then, from my perspective, yes, we want to get it to some stage where it's clean and lean so that the city will now go in and do something to remediate the situation for the neighbors because they're going crazy. That's a blessing. Or get the... The boards up. And we are so grateful when that happens, those things happen. Somehow, it has to get to a certain stage, usually, unless it's really bad. But then, when that happens, it's like, oh, thank goodness, that happened. But then, you still have the problem of that property. Now, it's boarded. Now, it's... For a while, it looks better, but it piles up again. So, then, what we really want is to somehow build the case to get it to receivership. At least, this is my perspective so that we can get it out of the hands of whoever it is that's doing nothing with this property while the city's going crazy trying to do something with it. And we need to go to receivership. You have to build a case. You have to go to court. Somebody has to say, "Done." And then, there's an auction, and it's one house at a time. They have rules, so you can't say it's got to be, "We want this one auctioned for homeownership, affordable homeownership." You have to have $2,500. So, a lot of people who live in neighborhoods can't get involved, like the Dollar House idea. They can't get involved. Nobody really has the money. I'm almost done, Mr. Chairman.
I know.
And then, it goes to receivership, and a lot of times, that really helps because the person fixes it up. But then again, a lot of times, sometimes, anyway, like on Remington Avenue, you get some guy who buys this thing at the auction and screws it up worse than it ever was, which is almost impossible to imagine. So, what I'm saying is, we have some of the best people in the world working in this agency in a system that is just frustrating. And I'm not... It's not a question. It's a statement. We need to figure out how we can move this process faster. And is that a money... Is that a matter of money, more people? Or is it a matter of legal things more, finding ways to do things, the way my colleague was talking about the rats, so that we can expedite and not spend so much time on just a house when there are hundreds and hundreds of them? And all these wonderful people in the agency got to get frustrated. So, I just throw that out there and say, "I would like in this coming year for us to really look at that whole process and figure out, is there any better way we can do it under the existing constitution of the United States, such as it is going to be soon, I'm sure?" And under the... And what amount of money for more personnel and all that would require? The other thing I'd like to just say is, I'm very excited that solid waste is going to this quadrant system. I'm excited because I have wonderful people in my quadrants. And I would like to... And it sounds like a good... And I would like to, and, and it sounds like a good idea, that you have one person to go to in a quadrant of the city for your solid waste issues, and that person is empowered, I presume, by the authority vested in the solid waste bureau chief to do everything, or to take, to direct other people to board houses, cut grass, you know, to, to come out and make an extra pickup of bulk trash someplace where there's been a mess, like with fraternities and undergraduates of universities. So, Mr. Chalmers, I would like to just ask this, is this thing launched now and is it, is it rolling, and what should we expect?
Yes, it's, it's launched, it's rolling, we have assigned division chiefs to the four quadrants of the city. As you stated, we once worked a task-based system, now we're, we're working in the quadrant-based system. What that will allow the division chiefs to do in a particular quadrant, like you said, they have all the tools in their toolbox to address, you know, whether it's boarding, whether it's graffiti, street and alley cleaning, mixed refuse, the whole gamut, they have all the tools that they need to accomplish that task without referring it to someone else to get it done, which, you know, when it goes, when you're passing an assignment from hand to hand, there's some lag time. So that was the, the whole purpose of reorganizing by quadrants was to bring about efficiency and better service for the citizens.
Do they have, then, my last question about this period, do they have, do these four people have staff? Like, do they have people who work for them, or is it like a contractual deal?
So there's a division chief, a few superintendents, supervisors, they, they have a, a full staff.
They do?
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Nat?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just had two quick questions. I saw on service seven forty-five, page two eighty-four, in the major budget items, that there was a removal of funding for the surveillance camera program. That seems a little bit backwards considering I think that can be a very useful asset to target frequently dumped sites. Is that something that we want to reconsider in the, moving forward, or can anyone just kind of dig into that a little bit? Because I see it's a huge resource for us.
So, councilman, that was just, that was a build out, that was one-time funding to purchase the cameras and equipment. So that was, that was appropriated in fiscal seventeen, so we build it out of eighteen.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councilman. Appreciate the brevity. Councilwoman Middleton?
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark, you just categorized two properties that, in a nutshell, have been through everything that you kind of mentioned, and I'm sure just about everybody in here knows this location and that, and Mr. Braverman is probably gonna know what I'm gonna say because we're gonna have our lawn chairs out there once this demolition takes place, and that's at the very end of West Cole Spring Lane and Garrison Boulevard, those two eyesore properties have been pure hell. So all that to say, I, that, you just categorized everything that I guess a, a code enforcement agency should go through, and I'd like to thank Mr. Hessler and Mr. Braverman for just periodically keeping me in a calm mode and hoping that that gets taken care of. I don't know if you wanna, I, I, one of my questions was gonna be more about the squatter situation in vacant city-owned property and privately-owned property, and how are you handling those, you know, situations, especially if it's an absentee landlord for a privately-owned property? All of us, I'm sure, we go through that, and our concern is like protecting the neighbors that are next door to these properties. I know some of these squatters use generators to, you know, operate the, you know, living space, and we have laws that we have to abide by, and with the increase in homelessness, it's becoming a problem. Would someone respond to that?
Jason Hessler, Assistant Commissioner for Litigation with Baltimore Housing. Councilwoman Middleton, you're absolutely correct. It is a daunting challenge. It is not so much a challenge in properties that are MCC-owned because we are the owners, we have the ability to take action on those properties. It is the privately-owned properties or bank-owned properties that are somewhere in between ownership that, that cause the greatest problem, and, and we do attack those challenges on a regular basis. One thing that was done with the council, Councilman Henry, it was his bill actually, that I think helped prevent some of these problems, is amending the vacant building language. So the definition of the vacant, of a vacant building was actually amended a few years ago to include these properties that are unoccupied and, for all purposes, abandoned, not being taken care of by the owner or the bank or anyone else, but not yet open to casual entry or not yet in a situation where they're clearly from the curb unfit for habitation. But the properties are rotting from the inside out, and those are the most ideal properties for squatters because they're not in bad shape yet, they still have a roof, they still have windows and doors, you know, so they're more comfortable than the average vacant building. So we amended, with the help of the council, we amended the, the definition and now can get a vacant building notice on those properties before they rot from the inside out, and then take them through the receivership process or push the banks or whoever to foreclose on them a lot sooner because they get that notice and they realize that something's happening and their investment's about to go away. With the other properties that kind of fall out from that, we do work with the banks, with the owners, with the police department, with BG&E and the water department, to identify those properties and then where it's possible, get those properties vacated. Sometimes it's difficult to say who is a squatter and who's a former tenant, and without an owner stepping up and being able to show that they truly have ownership, it, it definitely makes it more complicated. And we're struggling right now with four or five properties in the Hartford Road Corridor where people have just moved from, these are actually properties that are for sale, and they've moved, taken the for-sale sound down and moved in. And we've been working with the real estate agents, alerted them of the problems going on in that area, working with the police to, you know, nip it in the bud, really.
Thank you. And then my, I guess, last question, do you have a shortage of housing inspectors still? Net job spec?
We can always use more, let me just put it that way.
And I, and the reason why I bring that up is from yesterday, talking with DOT and GPW this morning and Human Resources, there, you know, again, you know, my advocacy for apprenticeship, and of course, the total council supports that, and just trying to find jobs for our young people and career paths that are, you know, not going on to college right away or not at all. And we know that housing inspector was a strong apprenticeship, and I know that your agency is still unique in creating other apprenticeships, and I did a, did a yield to the representatives, to the mayor's office, that we need to charge from the mayor to push agencies to create apprenticeships, and I also thought that when apprenticeship was under the Labor Commissioner's Office and HR, they, they worked it together, and these, you know, apprenticeship was really a vital thing. So I'm hoping that we can start to see some work done to do that again in light of the problems that we had in Sandtown.
We would like to do that, we lowered the age requirement for a housing inspector to eighteen, just so we could onboard from high schools. So we, we do want to continue that work, we share your belief in apprenticeships.
Thank you. We, it, it's just that, we, we want to continue to try to keep jobs for the residents of the city that, you know, have families that have been here for a long time, and they're looking for jobs for their, their children, it's a rippling effect. So, you know, it takes the city to reach out and, and, and try to create ways to help. And I see that this is an agency that can do that in many ways. Thank you.
Last request, Michael, can you get us an updated org chart for, for housing or Thank you very much, and we don't, colleagues, does anyone need one from CHAP or real estate? I know we already asked DPW. Okay.
I think I know everybody at CHAP.
All right, thank you, that concludes flight elimination. Next up is housing and community development, all other services. This is gonna go from four PM to five PM. If you're exiting the chambers, could you please exit? If you're staying, could you please be seated? I don't mean to be a stickler, but we're, we've got forty-nine hours of hearings and we're trying to stay on time.
And doing an incredible job.
Yes, you are.
I'm helping them.
Absolutely.
I, I, it's, it's kind of weird not to have whole agencies sitting out in the lobby for an extra half hour, because that used to be when I would go ask them all my questions.
Okay, Baltimore City Council, Budget and Appropriations Committee, session number seven, four PM to five PM, housing and community development, all other services. Joined to my left by Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the seventh district, Councilman Bill Henry from the fourth district, to my right, Councilman Zeke Cohen from the first district, Councilwoman Baby Ray from the thirteenth district, Councilman John Bullock from the ninth district, Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the Council from the sixth district, Marguerite Curran, staff to the committee, to my immediate right, Paul Plymouth from the council president's office, the mayor's office representative should be here somewhere, that's okay, though. And we are ready to get started. Mr. Braverman, if you could keep your presentation at about...
I can keep it very, I've been keeping it very short, but let me start by introducing the team.
Great presentation, thank you.
Because we have, right, that's fine. But, um, we have some new people, so let me start. Again, for the record, Michael Braverman, Acting Commissioner of Department of Housing and Community Development. On my right is Julie Day, our Acting Chief of Staff. I'm gonna start out at the far end, Wendy Redford, who's our Acting Deputy Commissioner for Land Resources, Kathy Benz in our Finance Department, I'm gonna go quickly, forgive me, Jeff Martin in our Finance Department, Segalinde Chamberlain, who is our CFO for all of Baltimore Housing, Bill Colbert, again, you know, got a rise, who is our departing head of finance for the HCD side, Nadia Morgan, who is the, our chief, chief administrative officer for our Department of Code Enforcement Division, and Alice Kennedy, who is our Deputy Commissioner for Division of Green and Healthy Homes and, and Sustainable, and Reggie Scriber, who is joining us now, who is our Deputy Commissioner for, our ombudsman all around, a Deputy Commissioner for Human Services, Steve James, who is, who is head of, has a very complicated title, but let's just say Steve runs all of our CDBG operations, and Sharon DeBois, who's our legislative liaison. Okay, that said, I think I could be quicker with the presentation than that. So I'm, again, we have everyone here who you need to talk to, I think the important point here is, for these kinds of community support projects, it is eight million dollars, roughly, in money coming in from the federal government, CDBG program, that's Steve, who I just introduced you to, him and his team oversees the distribution of those funds that come with a very complicated set of federal requirements for doing that, for spending the money, planning and execution and compliance on the backend, and contracting and compliance, so that you can protect the integrity of that program, and Steve and his team do that well, and we have some wonderful organizations in the city of Baltimore that receive support through the program. Before and after care, Reggie is here, that's what Councilwoman Clark spoke about at length, the daycare and the two schools. This is the component, where, this is where in our budget the administration, the administrative costs are, not, not very sexy, the Dawson Center, again, Reggie Scriber is here, who can discuss that in detail where services are provided. Again, this is a CDBG-funded operation. Registering licensed property, properties and contractors, there are a bunch of requirements under the law for registering and licensing, and we do that, we have an online capability for that. It is also a multifamily dwelling licensing, this comes out of this section, which ensures that multifamily dwelling licenses, multifamily dwellings in the city of Baltimore meet minimum life safety requirements. Community outreach services, this is the kind of emergency response work that Reggie Scriber's operation does. Summer food service program, this is again, another program that provides an extraordinary amount of assistance to our school-aged children around the entire city during the summer. And Alice Kennedy is here today to speak about that program, who's running it this year. Okay, that said, that got me through very quickly, I think, and we can move on to questions.
New record. Can you talk a little bit about the summer food service program? Just curious, I see you've got about four hundred sites, I'm assuming a large chunk of those are at schools, what are some of those other sites, like categories of those sites?
Okay, I'm gonna, and Reggie's been running it for years, but Alice is running it this year, and so we'll ask Alice to respond.
So the way that the summer food program is set up is that there are actually a number of sponsors within the city of Baltimore, so Baltimore Housing is one sponsor, City Schools is another sponsor, Family League is another sponsor, those are the three highest producing sponsors, and then there's about anywhere from five to seven to ten other organizations that act as sponsors and apply to the state to be able to serve at their sites. So City Schools actually manages their own, all of the schools for their summer meal program, and they're still in the process and have been in the process over the last three weeks, tried to determine exactly which schools will be open for summer meals, depending upon where there's summer programming and camps at some of the school locations based on the budget as a route for them.
Got it.
Noah, Noah Bears is, Bears is the staff person at the schools.
Got it. We've been joined by Councilwoman Shannon Snead from the thirteenth district and Councilman Scott from the second. Councilman, I know you had a question for the previous panel, if you...
I asked the previous panel.
Oh, you asked?
Yeah, I asked, that was, that was my high grass and weeds.
Okay. Colleagues, Councilman Scott?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Braverman, Miss Day, thank you for your exceptional service. I actually, this is the one agency I don't have any questions for, just kudos, I just want to say that in my humble opinion, that code enforcement is the most efficient service that the city has, and that if... service that the city has and that if all of the shops operated like that, we would have less of these discussions that we've been having throughout the budget process. But I would also like to point out that with Service 754, Councilman, there actually is a tool, on the mapping tool online, that you can actually see all the food sites across the city.
Got it. Thank you, councilman. And I second all of your comments. And my only question today, I think, was another link, so, thank you. Colleagues?
Technically, you guys have been here for two hours.
Do you guys want to talk about the Orioles for the next 45 minutes? Or do you guys want to be exclusive?
Can you pick a sunnier topic, please?
All right. Michael, thank you for everything. Your team is phenomenal, Julie is phenomenal, and Sharon, thank you as always. Your customer service is just incredible. The number of headaches that you deal with for me, and I'm sure many of my colleagues feel that exact same way, so thank you. And Alice, you're fantastic, too.
Well, thank you, thank you, members of the council for, I would say that when you, Brandon Scott's leaving, but I would say that one of the reasons we are effective in at least the code enforcement operations is because of the legislation that we have. And when we go to other places, they wonder, why do we have such amazing legislation in Baltimore? And it really is because we're really all one team here, trying to get the same work done. So, I wanted to turn around and thank everyone on my team. Reggie's here. He didn't, we didn't have a single question for Reggie, but we're so glad he's here, that the opportunity arose. And I just wanted to thank my team. Thank you very much.
You had a chance to leave earlier, but Councilman Pinkett has one question for you.
You had your chance. My question really was, is related to Service 754 with the summer food service program. And it might not have anything necessarily to do with the budget, but when I, when I see, you know, food service programs like this, either summer or after-school, I wonder if there's an opportunity to partner with the food service opportunities within our school system where young people are being taught in the food industry to be able to provide some of these services through, you know, some of our high schools. Given them the experience, you know, job opportunities, but also providing, you know, the food for these, you know, either after-school or summer. So, that's really, I didn't know if anyone had explored it or if it was a possibility to...
Alice is always thinking about those things, I'm sure.
I am, actually. So, within the summer food service program, we actually just, this morning, at Board of Estimates, awarded the contract for the summer food program. We divided this year the city into four quadrants and tried to solicit bids for that. Within the RFP that was put out, we actually put in a provision outside of the local work requirements, MBE, WB requirements as well. We put in a provision for extra points would be awarded if you addressed youth, youth jobs within, within your contract. So, the contract has been awarded this morning, and that contractor and vendor that will provide the summer food has, in the past, worked with youth and hired youth across the city to kind of work in their processing facility that they, and prep area in terms of cooking. And we anticipate that they will continue to do that even within what they put in their RFP. The provisions for summer food are also a little bit different because we act as a sponsor, basically running a program that is supervised by MSDE, so the Maryland State Department of Education, which is, and they're running it under the USDA. So, we have strict guidelines that we have to follow. And we actually could not award the contract until it was approved and all the qualifications and specifications were met and reviewed by MSDE for that contractor. So, we have some wiggle room in order to promote job training along the lines of what Councilwoman Middleton said about apprenticeship and so forth. And we've addressed that in our RFP process and will only continue to strengthen that potentially the next year. Well, it's a one-year contract with options, so...
Just one other question. Does the figure related to unused meals, does that include meals that are discarded?
I actually have to, I'm still familiarizing myself with the metrics for this service. I just came under my shop in February, beginning of March. But this would be both discarded meals and unused meals. And it's, it's a way that we track in terms of what we can be. It's a reimbursable program, so we're only reimbursed for the meals that are actually served.
Right. And so, part of what I was getting at is that ultimately, the program is to make certain that kids are getting meals who might not otherwise. And if the kids aren't actually eating the meals, then we need to be monitoring that as well.
Exactly, which we do because that's part of the entire monitoring system, which is actually very robust in terms of the number of, we have a staff of part-time community aides that come in for the summer to do all of our monitoring. So, we look at the number of meals that were served, what was actually eaten, what goes on the share table. So, we're allowed to kind of make some things happen to ensure. And that's one of the things that we're looking at. We've expanded this year over last year to do seven days a week, which was not previously offered. So, we're doing weekend meal service as well. So, we're constantly looking for opportunities. And if you have any organizations or know of someplace in your district that would be willing to be a summer food site for the summer, please let me know because we're still accepting site applications.
Thank you.
We've been joined by Council President Young.
I just have one quick statement. I didn't notice Mr. Scriber back there, but I'd like to give kudos to Mr. Scriber, what a wealth of information and just, you know, helping. He's on the ground and just always there and for any question and will, and always help. He's just a valuable person to, to definitely this council. So, hello there, Mr. Scriber. It's been a while.
Thank you, Reggie.
I don't agree.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you guys for sticking around. Connecting Councilman Pinkett's question and Vice President Middleton's question with the RFP, is there an opportunity for those youth jobs to then become apprenticeships or longer-term jobs? And, you know, we were just talking about strengthening the pipeline between our young people in this city and our agencies and making sure we are, you know, actively facilitating that pipeline and not just, no. There's a deep concern among council members about outsourcing jobs in our agencies that go outside of the city and just wanting to make sure, you know, we are training up our next generation of young people to work here in meaningful careers. So, I'm wondering if we are, there's an opportunity to leverage that RFP into something longer with some sort of more substantial career trajectory to it.
I'm always wanting to look at opportunities to leverage current opportunity, you know, current existing programs, resources, et cetera, especially when it comes to jobs, job training, and long-term opportunity and job growth for the city. So, I would say within the confines of the RFP as it stands, Martin's and the vendor has, you know, agreed and has shown in the past, in past years, that they have a commitment to youth jobs. And I think one of the conversations that we'll be having is how many of those, and one of the things that I don't know is just if they have in the past had anybody that's worked with them over the summer at the processing prep facility as a prep cook or prep person, if that's turned into another kind of longer-term job for them. One of the hard things is, is that the summer food program itself, they might do something within, that they hire, because they're not hiring them through us. It's not our agency that hires the youth or provides the job. It's a private entity. And the question would be is if they have somebody that's trained over the summer or is receiving job training as a youth over the summer, there isn't any function right now to track that person to see if they go off and get a job at another private corporation or, or person after their time with the vendor over the summer.
I guess, do we, do you all, do we have anything internally to track and then support a young person who gets a summer job into a career trajectory?
Not within our agent, like, within my division, specific to this, because we haven't done that in the past with a private corporation to say, how many youth have you hired? And then try to figure out a way to keep a database of those youth and follow up with them. We just don't have, I don't have the staffing capacity to do that or a database to do that at the moment. That would be something I think we'd have to look at collectively as a city across all of our agencies. And then look at all of the agencies as it relates to private contractors and apprenticeships and job training programs to see how we would track that.
Right. Thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I just want to commend Mr. Braverman and his team. I think they've been very responsive in just about everything that this councilman have asked. And I know that I probably can speak for most of the council people up here. Whenever we call over to housing, they get right back to us right away. I know that I've called Michael several times when he was out of the country, and he answered his phone. And I told him, no, Michael, no, I'll take care of it. I call Reggie on Sundays. I call Julie. Where's Wendy? I call, I call them all, you know, Nadia, I mean, the whole team. And it's just been a joy working with you all. And I'm hoping that whoever the new Housing Commissioner is, keep this valuable team in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. With that, we are going to go into recess. We will be, we will be back at 5:00 PM for the Department of Law, 5:00 PM sharp.